It is three o'clock, September twenty-sixth. We're in the commissioners' chambers. We're having a regularly-held meeting, September twenty-sixth, 2023. Everybody, please turn their cellphones off. Bledge, Mike, and then we'll have a prayer by Barbara. Did I get that correct? Okay, you guys, you just do what you guys want. We'll work it out. We'll acknowledge it later. If she don't write it down, anything can happen.
Our dear Emily, Father, as we come before thee in this public meeting this day, Father, we ask that thy guidance will be with our commissioners as we continue to run this county in the proper way. Father, we ask that thou bless our community with continued prosperity. We ask that thou bless our armed forces and our local first responders, that they can continue to be safe and protected. And as we continue on, we thank thee for the spring runoff that we had, that we weren't flooded. We ask that thou bless us again this winter with sufficient moisture for our needs. We ask these things now in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, approval of minutes for September eighteenth, 2023, work session, and September nineteenth, 2023, regular meeting. Do I get any questions, comments, or motions?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from September eighteenth work session and the September nineteenth commission meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Warrants, Mike?
Commissioners, I have warrants from September twenty-first, 2023, in the amount of one million, eight hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred six dollars and three cents. There was a check to BHI for one million, four thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. We also had our check to Cigna for our health insurance for the month, three hundred and forty-three thousand, and then everything else was just regular bills.
All righty.
And no claims.
No claims? Anything else? Tax matters?
I have one, but it's specifically on the agenda, so I'll bring it back up.
Okay. Barbara, you're not on the gen-- no, you are. Tax matters, Barbara. Escape property-- oh, it says right here, Barbara, you are on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I'm asking for the commissioners to allow an adding of escape property taxes on serial number zero nine zero six nine zero 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 eight for the tax shares, two thousand nineteen through present. And the total tax due is fifty thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents, with the possibility of penalties and interest being added after thirty days. And the reason for this is that the subject property was recorded incorrectly, and so it never transferred ownership from the original owner to the new owner. And that was caught, and so this is the correction, removing it from being centrally assessed to locally assessed, from back to the original owner, because that has not been corrected.
And you did say they're aware of that now?
Once it's approved, then I will send certified letters to them.
Oh, no, I mean, the owners are aware that it was recorded incorrectly?
They were notified by the recorder. It said, recorder's note invalid description, because they recorded the legal description incorrectly, so it went into property that was not theirs.
Okay.
All righty. Any other questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to direct Barbara to issue a letter in regards to this. Starting again. I would make a motion to have the assessor issue a letter to the individuals as she has prescribed.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, second. That gonna work, Mike? I think that's covered with that, everything we need in that. I was kinda thinking we might need--
The serial number?
The only other thing I was--
I think all your motion said was to instruct her to send the letter. I think you need to--
Oh, motion.
Approve--
To approve the escape tax.
And to approve the-- I amend my motion to approve the escape tax.
Okay. In the amount of fifty thousand, six fifty-eight, eighty-four. And that includes 2023?
It does include 2023.
Yes.
Because it won't be on our notices.
All right. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
All right, indigent abatement?
Commissioners, I present to you today the 2023 indigent abatement list. You've all received this prior to. Total abatement that's being requested this time is seven thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and eleven cents. There are fifteen property owners that have applied for this abatement.
Well, I think if we've looked through those abatements and the reasonings and what they are, and we've come to the conclusion, this is the list, and the, you know, I feel like we have done our
Right.
due diligence on looking at them.
It's a fifty percent of their taxes due.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
Nope.
Motions?
I would make the motion that we approve the indigent abatement that have been presented in the amount of seven thousand, was it four hundred and eleven?
Four hundred and eighty-one dollars and eleven cents is the total.
Seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and eleven cents?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, Janie Bird. Indigent Defense Commission Grant Modification.
Okay, Jenny Bird Grants. I have a grant modification for the Public Defender Office's Indigent Defense Commission Grant. The modification includes changes to the contract services line for the new Justice Court contract, the increased attorney contract amounts for District Court and Child Welfare, and the reduced Conflict Council budget. So the contract changes, those were all previously approved by the commission on August first, and this modification is just to reflect those changes. So essentially, the county-side spending was increased by forty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars for the FY twenty-four fiscal year of this grant.
All right. You need appropriate motion for us to approve the grant for the increase of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the contract for indigent defense, increasing the amount of the county to forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. For two oh two, three, four, for two thousand and four a year.
Two thousand, twenty-four.
For the FY twenty-four, so July first to June thirtieth of next year.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Oh, man, you're just on the list here for quite a little bit here.
Yeah, got a lot.
Getting you worked up here. All right, go ahead.
Okay, the next one is the Voca Grant Award from the Utah Office for Victims of Crime. This is for the UNT County Attorney Office Victim Assistant Program. This is a two-year grant award, beginning July first, 2023, to June thirtieth, 2025. The total award amount is two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and four cents. There is no county match requirement for this. The funds are for direct victim services, and this award funds two victim assistant positions and supplies, benefits, and emergency services for victims.
Okay.
And on this one, they want an electronic signature, so in the motion--
I think I got it on there today and forwarded it to John to get his blessings, but--
Okay.
All right, two hundred and sixteen or two hundred and fifteen thousand?
Two one six, one eight three.
One eighty-three oh four.
Now, is this for a two-year period?
Yes.
Total is two hundred and sixteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay, any questions, motions?
I would make a motion that we approve the Utah Office for Victims of Crime Act, or Voca, grant agreement in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and four cents for a two-year agreement for, from seven one of twenty-three, is that right, to seven thirty of twenty-five?
To six thirty.
I mean, six thirty of twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Just keep on rolling.
All right, the next one is ratification of the revitalization grant agreement for UNT County's chip seal machine purchase. This was approved in March, and the contract was signed at the end of June. It just was never taken through a commission meeting.
Okay, so you need a ratification of that?
Yes.
Something that we-- the chairman must have goofed up and signed too early?
Yeah, it was an electronic signature thing, so I don't know.
All right. I'll blame it on Ellen. She's not in here. Or Zeke. He's sitting away. All right, any questions? Okay, motions?
I'd make a motion to ratify that revitalization grant, twenty-three DWS zero five five four, for the chip seal.
Okay, I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. I guess you're still on.
Still on. The next three are grants from the State of Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation Off-Highway Vehicle Recreation Grants. So the first one, we'll need a motion for each of these separately. The first grant award is for the UNT County Trails Crew. This award is in the amount of eighty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars to fund a two-person seasonal trail crew, a side-by-side and miscellaneous equipment to perform routine maintenance of trails post-signage on unmarked trails and assist with ongoing projects and events. The county's match is twenty-one thousand, twenty-five percent match, so the project total is one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
All righty. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I need electronic signatures for these, too, if you'll put that in the motion.
Signed that one? Okay, all righty.
Not yet.
Okay. I usually forward them to John and try to always have him look them over, and then sometimes they get--
Yeah, and John does have these, so I believe you forwarded these.
All righty. All righty.
Do we need to approve them individually?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the State of Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation Off-Highway Vehicle Recreation Grant for UNT County Seasonal Trails Crew in the amount of eighty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars with a match from UNT County in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, Moonshine Arch Restrooms.
Yes, the next one, State of Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation Grant for Moonshine Arch Restrooms. UNT County will install a permanent two-stall vaulted restroom at Moonshine Arch Trail. This will replace the two temporary portable restrooms currently being used. The grant award amount is fifty-two thousand dollars. County match is thirteen thousand dollars. Project total, sixty-five thousand dollars. That's a twenty-five percent match.
Okay, you said that was, we would install them?
Well, we're going to pay somebody to install it.
Okay, all righty. And so that's where the thirteen--
Is that our match that we're using to do that?
Okay. All right, any questions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the State of Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation Off-Highway Vehicle Grant for Moonshine Arch Restroom to the matching of thirteen thousand dollars to the state's contribution of fifty-two thousand dollars for a total of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed.
Okay, the next one, State of Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation Grant for UNT County Search and Rescue Drone. This is for the search and rescue to purchase an advanced drone to use while responding to calls that occur in UNT County, specifically in remote areas with limited ground access. The grant award amount is twenty-four thousand dollars. County match is nine thousand dollars. Total project cost, thirty-three thousand dollars. And that is a thirty-eight percent match. The match is increased on that because they use the amount of search and rescue calls that are OHV-related on that.
Okay. Any questions, comments, motions?
I would make the motion that we approve the State of Utah Division of Outdoor Recreation Off-Highway Vehicle Recreation Grant for UNT County Search and Rescue Drone in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars with a nine thousand dollar UNT County match.
Got a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, at this time, we need to recess. Mike, you might have to help us walk through this. We're gonna recess now into the MBA, Multiple Building Authority, and at that time, we'll turn the time over to Commissioner Larson.
Okay, it is the time for the-- Oh, I'd make a motion to go into the MBA public hearing. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I'm sorry, I guess it's your turn.
Chairman Larson.
Chairman Larson. What am I doing? This is the time for UNT County MBA public hearing. The grant application is in the process from UNT County, and we're submitting for-- with an application to the Community Impact Board Fund for a grant of five hundred seventeen thousand dollars for a project totaling one million, thirty-four thousand dollars. The grant is to acquire funds to purchase a compactor for UNT County landfill. Jeanne, if you'll read the project's scope of work?
Okay, so the project's scope of work, UNT County will purchase a new compactor for its Vernal and LePointe landfills to compact and bury approximately fifty-five thousand tons of waste it collects annually. The compactor is a crucial piece of equipment in optimizing landfill operations, and is the only machine equipped to evenly disperse, compact, and stabilize the landfill debris areas. UNT County's current compactor is a two thousand and six Bomag that is in need of constant repair, costing the county over twenty-seven thousand dollars in repair and maintenance expenses this year. Acquiring a new landfill compactor will reduce repair-related expenses, increase compaction rates, lower emissions, and improve UNT County residents' health, safety, and public welfare. The UNT MBA is seeking a fifty-fifty cash grant from the Permanent Community Impact Fund Board in the amount of five hundred thousand, five hundred seventeen thousand. So the county's match will be the same, five hundred seventeen thousand, for a project total of one million, thirty-four thousand dollars. The county has budgeted this match portion in the 2024 budget, and property taxes and fees for the landfill will not be increased as a result of this project. And then the CIB financing, CIB may provide all or partial funding, and they may award the county, I guess, the MBA a grant in the form of a loan, even if we apply for cash. If they don't fund the entire requested amount, then the county intends on applying for revitalization funds to cover the remaining.
Okay, thank you. Let me point out the compactor we're currently using. It's seventeen years old, so it's pretty tired. Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing or hearing none, I'll now close the public hearing and ask for a motion to submit the application to CIB.
Like to make a comment. Is that now, or should I--
Certainly, go ahead.
They, you know, I feel like that the fees that they charge out there for the oil field and industries dumping fees are probably as high as we can get them. I don't know that we dare raise them anymore. You know, I'm not sure of that, you know, but I think we're, you know, fairly, you know, in line with what we're supposed to be charging. It should be charging for dump fees. You know, and the, you know, so I think we're not out, you know, I don't know that there's any room for us to go in there and raise fees there to cover this, you know, to add, to help cover this expense. I don't feel like myself, you know, is, and then, you know, and it, and I kinda really think that, I don't know that we'd have the funds with, I don't think there's an option there to go to revitalization, you know, for this option, you know, because we've got to buy the graders, and we're trying to use that money for graders next year. So I, you know, really don't know that, I think we've explored our avenues that we need to, to, you know, to try to come up with, you know, this before we, you know, made the desire to go to the CIB, you know, but it's, and that's just kind of my comments on it there.
I wouldn't mind making a couple of comments as well. I believe we're trying to be responsible, and we're trying to look at ways to leverage the money that we do have to help the taxpayers here in UNT County. We also want to be responsible and make sure that we're charging the fees that we need to there at the landfill, as Commissioner Horick stated. So I believe we are doing that by only requesting a fifty percent match to the Community Impact Fund Board, and that's why I am in favor of moving this project forward as well.
You know, and it's kinda hard to get down to, you know, exactly how much is, if you tied it into it, or heavily, I probably think that it's forty percent of it. A lot of them big loads, I should say. Let's back up, come from the oil field, gas-filled industry, but it's probably kinda hard to monitor or know exactly, but it's well-used with the oil and gas industry, so. All right, let's see. Okay, now we're out of there. Come on, I'm back.
And we would accept a motion.
Okay, okay, at this time, I'd like to, if there's any more comments, I'd like to look for a motion.
Oh, well, he's the one looking for a motion still?
No, he's out. I think I'm back to being boss. No, John is.
I'm the boss.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're the one who has to be the motion. I still could be the boss for a minute.
So I would make a motion that we forward this project, the five hundred and seventeen thousand request in the form of a grant from the permanent Community Impact Fund Board with five hundred and seventeen thousand that we will cash match for a project total of one million, thirty-four thousand dollars for the landfill compactor.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Is there any other matters?
Now you can make the motion to reconvene.
I would make the motion to--
Or does he have to just adjourn? It just says adjourn to MBA.
Okay.
There you go. That's what I'm looking for, a motion to adjourn the MBA and go back into normal session.
Okay, State of Utah Criminal Justice Program--
We gotta have a vote on the first.
Oh, okay.
Do we have to have a vote on the adjourning?
No, I didn't think--
No? Okay, go for it.
All right, number nine, adjourn MBA, oh, never mind, can't. State of Utah Criminal Justice Program Contract, Charmaine Gull.
No, this was going to be our attorney.
Okay, Mr. Will.
John Stermer. Well, he just said--
They thought we--
I can talk to that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right, we have received a grant for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide a pre-trial probation department. The ideal is that a lot of people are re-offending from the time they're charged with something till the time they actually go to court. And this program is a pilot program in the state of Utah. We're the only ones that will have it. It will be under the supervision of the UNT County Attorney, Jamin Thomas. We did get everything signed, and we're ready to rock and roll. We just need approving of the contract itself. It'll be a pass-through. Did I miss anything, Sheriff?
Okay.
At this point, you're ratifying it, because--
Yeah, it's already--
Commissioner Horick--
I thought we already--
So, yeah, I did notice-- So you need, I think you need a motion to ratify the acceptance of that grant.
I would make a motion to ratify the acceptance of the grant for the--
Yeah, and the signature.
CCJJ.
And prove the signature.
We have a motion.
Yeah, along with the signature for that already, right?
That's what he said.
Yeah.
Okay. I would second that, then.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, number eleven, ordinance number, all right, Matt, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Matt Kazir, UNT County Community Development Office. We're here with ordinance number zero nine dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three oh one. This was a request made by a couple of insurance agents from our, from the basin here. They were seeking to amend section seventeen point twenty-nine point zero one zero through zero three zero. The section of the code deals with temporary signs. And what they were wanting to change it to is that temporary signs could basically be installed anywhere throughout the county during the open enrollment periods for Medicare, for the Medicare program and other enrollment programs that are associated with Medicare, and some other supplemental insurance programs that they have. So the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this item. Their, one of the real estate, or sorry, one of the insurance agents was here, was at the meeting along with a few clients that made comments. The Planning Commission did have some questions on the legality of approving this kind of request for one group. And so we took those questions to the county attorney's office. And the feedback that we got from the county attorney's office is that it shouldn't be done for just one group. If it was good for that one group, it should be good for the whole county. So either do it for everybody, or don't change it. Was, in a nutshell, what we got back from the county attorney's office. So based on that recommendation from the county attorney's office, the Planning Commission recommended that the application be denied, and that we just leave our temporary sign ordinance the way that it currently stands. And that was a unanimous vote from the Planning Commission.
All right, any comments? You know, we discussed this and worked through it a little bit in work session, so I guess we'll just move on to number twelve.
Oh, well, wait. No, eleven, we have to vote.
I don't think we have to--
Yeah, we have to, either, don't we have to--
I would say you need to take action on it one way or the other.
We can vote. Okay, I was thinking by not voting, that was, okay.
But I did have some comment. I was going to say, we did visit with the Planning Community Development Director, Matt Kazir, and looked at this ordinance, and we felt like that there were other avenues and ways that they could accomplish this same thing without changing the ordinance. That's part of the reason I think the Planning Commission probably voted down this amendment.
Yeah, a lot of the questions that they had for the applicant was directed at that, you know, on, there are other options there that they can, they can use. There's billboards out there that they can rent and advertise on. There's other, if they have commercial properties, they're okay to advertise on those commercial properties for it as well. So they felt like there is sufficient room for it. And they also felt like they didn't want to see signs everywhere, six months out of the year. So they weren't real anxious to approve just letting them put signs wherever for that five-month period, so.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we, what did I say, deny the amendment to ordinance number nine twenty-five dash twenty-three oh one, which would amend section seventeen dot twenty-nine dot zero one zero through dash zero three zero.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Motion passed. Steve, BLM contract with the sheriff's office modification?
This is our BLM contract that we have every year with the BLM. They're just extending it another year for the amount of sixteen thousand, eighteen dollars and seventy cents. That was the exact same amount this current year, which runs from ten one twenty-three to nine thirty of twenty-four. The total contract is still eighty thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. And that requires my signature, and then I can get clerk a contract.
Okay.
You said modification.
It's just an extension to this. That's what they're-- It's just an extension to this, there, that's what they're, that's their verbiage, is a modification.
But the eighty thousand was for like a five-year or something, or, oh, okay, that's what I missed, sorry.
I don't remember the total years, but it's, it's the same amount.
If you add that-
This year, yes.
Divide eighty thousand by the sixteen, okay.
All right, I'd make a chair, I-
I'd make a chair.
Okay, I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the BLM contract with sheriff's office modification in the amount of sixteen thousand eighteen seventy, run from ten-one of twenty-three to nine-thirty of twenty-three.
Twenty-four.
Or twenty-four, teach me to read.
And it is five years, I multiplied, it's five years, okay.
Got a motion?
I'd also amend it to this, the sheriff's signature would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. You're still on.
Okay, this is our FBI, Younta and O'Rey Safe Trails Task Force, um, agreement, this is with, uh, um, DOJ, and it, it gives us twenty thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents for the year with a maximum of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five sixty-three per month for one task force officer to help with issues that we need to go federal on.
Okay, any questions, comments, motions?
And this has my signature as well, and then I'll get the contract.
I have, um, no, no questions, so I would make a motion that we approve the Younta and O'Rey Safe Trails Task Force Agreement uh, for twenty thousand seven oh-seven fifty per year, uh, this year, with a maximum monthly amount of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five sixty-three. Did you say what the dates are for that contract?
October first, twenty-three to September thirtieth of twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, that would be in my motion then.
With appropriate signature.
With, yes, with allowing Sheriff Leibram to sign that agreement.
Okay, got a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you. Okay, we now need to recess for the Board of Equalization, is that all I gotta say?
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion to go into that?
Mm-hmm.
Let's make a motion.
You are the, yeah, better just to be safe.
I'll make such a motion.
Got a motion?
I will second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, Commissioners, this is the twenty-twenty-three Board of Equalization, we had a total of fifty-four, uh, appellants appeal their properties. One was dismissed for late filings, and forty-four was stipulations, and that's what I present to you today, Commissioners. Uh, total of, the total original value was thirteen million eight hundred and thirteen thousand one forty-four. Stipulated value is eleven million three hundred and eighty-five dollar, three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and three for a net change in value of two million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars. There is still one that is going to full appeal unless he is withdrawn, they keep telling us they're gonna withdraw, but they have not in writing yet. But everything else was, assessors met with all of them and was able to come to a consensus on them.
And what, uh, will you need a motion inside?
We need a motion to approve the stipulation report as presented.
As presented, okay.
Sorry, I did have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You said there were fifty-four, one dismissed, so fifty-three, forty-four-
Ten, there was no action taken on them. So those, no action was, the assessor was able to prove to the appellant that their value was correct.
Okay, so forty-three were stipulated then?
Forty-four were stipulations.
Then that would make fifty-five, so somewhere we're off one.
Well, then there was eleven.
Well, we had one dismissed.
One was dismissed.
Forty-four, you said stipulated, that would put us, and then ten would be fifty-five, wouldn't it?
I was just trying to go by memory, 'cause this doesn't show that one, so I might have been off one number.
Okay, I'm just trying to get this-
Yeah, but there was forty-four stipulations that is being presented to-
So maybe nine were stipu- nine were dismissed, no action?
No action.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, we'll have a look for a motion.
That's kind of a complicated motion, because I wanted to list the amounts and that, how about we try?
Okay.
I will make a motion that, out of the fifty-four that were proposed, I guess you could say-
We just do the forty-four stipulations that were approved.
That's all we have to approve, okay, so we would approve the forty-four stipulated amount? Do we need to list the amount though, then?
We could list the original value-
Okay.
And then the stipulated total values.
So the, the original value I had is thirteen million eight hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four.
Correct.
And the stipulated amount would be eleven million three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine oh-three?
Correct.
So it makes a difference of two million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand two forty-one?
Correct.
Okay.
You're real good.
I'll second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, okay, now we're just adjourned out of, uh, Board of Equalization. We are now in the time for public comments, it's public comments, we wanna remind everybody that public comments is a time for public comment, not public debates. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration, the county will not be responding to comments or answering questions, comments made might not be something the county has the power to act on, this is a recorded public meeting. If someone would like to make a s- comment, they will need to wait until the microphone is available and state their name for the records. Please be respectful, no interruption, please wait your turn. We will do it for a total of fifteen minutes, we'll be allotted for public comments, each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. Do we have anybody today wants to make public comments? Come forward and state your name. Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Ast, I am from Conwood Heights, Utah, do you need my full address?
No.
No. Um, as you can see, uh, the handout that I provided, uh, we are with a group, my associate and I, Roy Piscadlo, um, Election Certification Matters. We have now been to, yeah, counting Younta County, twenty-four counties. Um, often it's in private meetings, but it doesn't always work out that way. We have an initiative before you that we're not asking for any action by this commission on. We simply want to make you aware of what we're doing. The elections in this state need to go through a more vigorous certification process that, um, to ensure that our elections are certified correctly and fair, and the right person is placed in office. We make no representation about Younta County, whether it conducts their elections fairly or not, we, we don't know. We actually suspect that it's very fair here. We know that some of the larger counties, there's some discrepancy in some of the voting that goes on there, and some of the total counts. For example, uh, there was, in Salt Lake County, an overvote of twelve thousand four hundred votes within the withheld category of our voters, um, that was not explained, and an overvote, to define that is that there were twelve thousand four hundred more votes cast than there were registered voters. When this was brought before the Lieutenant Governor's Office, they had no explanation for this. So there's several groups out there that are trying to address integrity of our elections. There's several different ways, possible ways to cheat. We are not making any representation about that, we're saying vote how you want, but allow us the opportunity to bring in third-party verification. I know my time is limited, uh, we presented to Duchene County yesterday, they allowed us forty-five minutes, but we were actually on the agenda. Uh, we may call and ask for additional time or individual meetings with you in the future. And with that, I would like to turn over just a few minutes to my associate, Roy Piscadlo.
He can have three minutes too.
He's got three minutes too, and-
Oh, I don't know how, what time it is.
You still got thirty seconds left.
Okay. Well, again, I wanna be very, very clear, um, we make no representation of any impropriety in this or any other county. What we wanna do is we wanna ma- go through with what Roy will describe to you based on a financial model that has been in place since two thousand and two for our financial markets that works very, very well, and there's no reason that as a state, we cannot implement that here. What happens in Salt Lake County, Davis County, Utah County affects Younta County. Whether or not our elections are conducted fairly here, what they do there is going to determine who our senator is, who our governor is, and, uh, Congress, uh, representatives. And so, wanna make that point, and then, now my time is up, so I'll turn the time over to Roy Piscadlo.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Roy Piscadlo, I live a couple doors away from Steve in, uh, Salt Lake County. I recommend just going to this page here, and we'll give you a copy afterwards, um, this copy, we didn't come with enough copies. Um, this model for certification is something that's used in a lot of different industries. Um, you see, here we have the, 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 the group, the person who's conducting the election, the, uh, county clerk. Uh, it's a very, very, very hard job, that's something that we've, I always thought, how hard could it be to actually count votes? But it's actually very hard. Um, when they conduct an election, they gather data, whether it's vote by mail, vote in person, uh, he's got a lot of data. That data is then, and a report is then given to you, the Board of Canvassers, and you then are required to certify. Um, all we're asking to do here is, and this is something that would be done on a statewide basis, county by county, and funded by the state, uh, is the data that is collected by the county clerk, uh, is then evaluated by an election, uh, expert. It could be an accounting firm like Deloitte and Touche, or we can, we can, uh, find somebody who's going to then, uh, do that certification or do that analysis. They will then write a report for you, and then you just, you guys individually decide whether you're going to certify or not. Same time, the same data that's going to that group of people that is actually, uh, evaluating the election and, and, and doing their own independent, uh, uh, look at the election, that those, that report then gets published so that voters and/or anybody running can actually look at that report as well. And then those data then also go to, can be, uh, evaluated by private citizens like ourselves to evaluate the, the, the results, or not the results, but really the method by which the election experts actually evaluate the election. So if they do something wrong, they can be held accountable. Like they make a mistake, they didn't get everything to tie out, or they missed something, they were grossly negligent. Um, the registered voters can hold them accountable. So it really does give you guys, the Board of Canvassers, uh, an ability to have some third party take a look at it, decide, you then decide, but it, it, it's the certification or the report then also goes to registered voters. The registered voters can then also check the people who actually are doing this work.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so that's really it.
Oh, okay.
That's really it, so.
Twenty seconds to burn, but okay.
Well, I'd like to come back and, and have a conversation with the clerk, we've been with a lot of different people. One of the things we'd like to be able to get from you guys as we think about this, we get feedback. Like, for example, yesterday we were in Duchene, um, and we got some very interesting feedback, and we're going to be writing, uh, working with state legislators, 'cause obviously they're, they're the ones that write the law, but the most important thing is to get feedback from you guys, because you're the Board of Canvassers and you're actually conducting the election. We wanna make sure that when we put this together, that we're not creating undue burden on you guys, and we're being as helpful as possible to you guys, okay? So to the extent that we could get feedback from you at some point in time, that would be great, and we wanna reflect that in the law that we're writing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate you being here, all right, let's see, we need to, we, anybody else, we need to, uh, somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
Go make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.